We're gonna start with the Seminole City Council meeting, and then we'll go for the mayoral appointment for our new counselor, and then we'll put that in recess, and then start with the Utilities Authority like we normally do. If we could, go ahead and please call to order the Seminole City Council meeting. Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen, here.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Bill Watlin.
Here.
John Kramer. Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For sake of mercy and mercy, I am going to give you my little prayer for the city of Seminole. For my worship, my own, it is no ticket that is, for my worship, sake of mercy, I will get this. For God's mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
If we could move to appointments and elections. Consideration possible, action to approve the mayoral appointment of Corey Crabtree as City Council member for the city of Seminole and related city authorities to fill the Ward Three vacancy of the council and authority member Jeff Griffin, who subsequently resigned.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please, Jay?
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Neil Watlin.
Yes.
Mr. Dowd for affirmation of office for City Council member. Raise your hand. Heed after me. Aye, Corey Crabtree.
Aye, Corey Crabtree.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of Seminole City Council member.
Of Seminole City Council member.
As well as authority member.
As well as authority member.
For the Seminole Utilities Authority.
For the Seminole Utilities Authority.
Seminole Gas Authority.
Seminole Gas Authority.
And Seminole Airport Authority.
And Seminole Airport Authority.
And will do the best of my ability.
Will do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, defend.
Preserve, protect, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter of the City of Seminole, Oklahoma.
And the Charter of the City of Seminole, Oklahoma.
If I could get a motion for recess.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole Airport Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Eddie Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer. Chris Hansen.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Do we need to do the appointment again for this?
No, we just did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Consideration and action of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could now please call to order the Gas Authority. Can we get a roll call, please, Jay?
John Kramer. Tim Poplin. Eddie Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
It's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could now please call to order the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Eddie Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer. Chris Hansen.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin. Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
It's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, under approvals and acceptances, Resolutions Number One. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number SUA 2018-01. A resolution amending the budget and appropriating $120,000 to the non-budget, excuse me, non-bond funding of the Series 2010 Revenue Bonds for water line repairs to Milt Phillips and equipment repairs to the city's front end loader.
It's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to reconvene the Seminole City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do I have a motion for consideration and action of the consent agenda?
It's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excuse me. Appointments and elections, consideration and possible action to approve the mayoral appointment of Zach Northrip to the Board of Adjustments through June 2020 to replace Gene Bergerson, whose term expired in 2017.
It's approved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing. Open the public hearing to discuss the proposal for annexation of certain unincorporated territory into and within the municipal boundaries of the city of Seminole as presented by the joint petition of record property owners filed and received on February 22, 2018.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. We are in receipt of a petition by several landowners to the north and east roughly surrounding the Seminole State Campus to be annexed into our city limits. So, we have with us, I think, every party that has petitioned the annexation of that territory, with the exception of one, Mrs. Hernandez, who is next to the new high school property. She's actually the one that sold the property to the high school, or to the Seminole Public Schools. She signed a petition to include an extra 40 acres adjacent to that new high school property. She's not here, she's in Woodward, but she was a signator on the petition. So, with that, Mr. Gases has been given authority to speak on her behalf. So, I think what we probably need to do at this point, Sharon, can we, can we bring up our map first? And then we'll give it to some of the property owners. Again, this is a petition to the City Council. They are petitioning you to annex them into the territory. We've done it, Brad specifically, and Sharon, a large part, has, have done a tremendous amount of research into what, what's required to do the annexation properly. And we're gonna kind of walk you through some of the actions that must be taken. So, this will be the new outline if you approve the annexation. This is the entire city limits with the exception of the Sportsman Lake. So, we will end up with a pretty good piece of property on the northwest side that will now be within our city limits. So, in your packet, or on, in front of you, is a yellow outlined map. The yellow outlined map, I don't think we've got it on the overhead, I apologize to the audience, but the yellow outlined map will include, there's been quite a bit of publicity lately about our new housing development that we are expecting, along with the new baseball facility that Seminole State intends to construct, as well as our new high school. And there are one or two other pieces of property that are included. I think Mr. Taylor is here tonight, and he has asked to bring in his seven acres that are roughly across the street from the Haney Center south. So, we've got everyone present, you're welcome to ask questions along the way, of course. And we will be handing this over, I think, let's get Larry Owlsley, or Matt, whoever wants to do the talking. You guys come tell us why you need to be a part of the city of Seminole.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of SEDC, the city staff, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, the audience. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And we have fallen in love with the city of Seminole. We want to bring to Seminole a new housing mixed-use planned unit development. It consists of multifamily, single-family homes, commercial, and some retail. I'm gonna move this into the first phases. We bought this tract of land about 30 days ago, about a month ago. It consisted of about 295 acres. It's directly adjacent to Seminole State College. You'll see Highway Nine, I'm sorry, Highway Nine follows the south border. Haney Center is here approximately, and then there's a church located up here. So, all of this is Seminole State College. So, you kind of get an idea and location as to where we're at, directly across from the new high school site, which is located in this area right here. This is the tract of land we purchased. This is the, let me get the quicker to work. This is the tract that we proposed to sell to the Seminole State College for their new baseball facility. Met with them this afternoon for a good extensive meeting. All was well, worked with the city, city is working well with the college and with us, our engineers, and their baseball facility. If you've seen any designs of it, it's quite elaborate. It'll be a very nice facility and amenity for the city of Seminole. Cutting that piece out, we will start with our Phase One development, Phase One A. One of the biggest needs that I've seen in Seminole, and Seminole is such a unique town in the fact that you have such diversification of business here. I have never, in my life, and I've been in this 46 years, ever seen a town that exemplifies Seminole, that has such strong business centers here. And the diversification is just amazing. And we feel like that we could possibly come, I mean, we kind of believe in our company that we want to bring about a better place to live. It's one of our little mottos. And we want to bring as much housing and as much multifamily unit apartments, village style, villa-style cottages, single-family homes, gated communities, and commercial and retail that we can. We feel like an awful lot of jobs leave Seminole every day and have to depart and live somewhere else. So, we feel like that the economic times are right, you're getting a brand-new high school. The economic development needs to take place for a good, strong, mixed-use development. This would be part of our first phase. We'll have various entrances off of Highway Nine. We're in the process of traffic counts, working with ODOT. Already have curb cuts, I've actually grandfathered in and established. In engineering, we should be actually moving ahead pretty fast after, if annexation is approved this evening. This first unit, which one of the strongest needs we feel like in multifamily, is approximately 300 units. And those will, that will be the first area of construction we take place, that does take place. We'll follow this road up. At some point, we'll have a site plan from Seminole State College regarding the proximity of their ball fields, parking fields, and so forth. We will also, in our Phase One A, construct about 29 to 30 single-family lots along with this. You know, developments are driven by supply and demand. We think the demand is there strongly, so we expect to move into Phase One B very quickly, which would involve then some additional retail coming in on the frontage of the highway. Remember, the Haney Center is right here, new high school right across the street. 300 units here, and approximately 318 units in this complex. We kind of created a different look, a different style, but we feel like one, two, and three-bedroom units are in strong demand. The second part of Phase One will also house, let's see, 56 additional homes around this area here. And this begins the start of a indoor and exterior-outdoor RV boat recreational storage unit. And indoor storage, feel like with awful lot of people in this development, that we're gonna need some self-storage units that'll be gated, done very nicely, contained within the perimeter of this area. And in Phase Two, this will begin to be completed about two-thirds. Phase One C, the completion of Phase One, will be approximately 160 single-home sites, all in the yellow. We have a little creek area to deal with. We'll create a, dig a pond area right here, be a water feature and amenity, park area surrounding. And this is an additional group of multifamily units in the completion of the outdoor and indoor self-storage units. So, you can kind of see an idea for retail expanded. And this becomes mostly 40, 35 to 40 percent of our development in Phase One. We end up with approximately, on this site right here, we have, just in our first phase, 852 apartments, if the demand calls for it, and approximately 160 single-family home sites. Now, as we evolve into Phase Two and Phase Three, it would begin to look something like this. We don't have it colored in yet, because it's kind of a work in progress. Grand entrance, four-laned inn, roundabout, water features with fountains, park area, gated areas up in this area, and more single-family residents all through here. Potential for more retail, should the supply and demand be there, or for additional multifamily or single-family, whichever it takes us, when you, whichever direction it takes us. When you do a flex PUD, Planned Unit Development, you have the ability to be flexible within the guidelines and the parameters of this, which we'll come back and obviously present to you on zoning for this property. And you kind of have the ability to move things around somewhat like on a checkerboard or chessboard, subject to the supply and demand, so we don't have to come back to council every time for a zoning change, lot splits, and so forth. So, a flex PUD, if you've never encountered that, which you probably have, becomes a very unique tool as far as developments go. And it's very, it's very user-friendly, we'll call it, to the developer and to the city. And it works very well in developments we've done in the past. So, this would be our completed Phase One. College land sold off, baseball facilities and all in. Main entrance here, another entrance here. This will all be put in to accommodate the college baseball facility. Have a, quite a number of people out there in baseball season. Malloy Road will be improved, coming into our property. Self-storage here, possibly up here. 160 single-family units, and the number was 852, but all materializes this way in multifamily units, and about 60,000 square foot of retail on these two tracks. You probably saw in the paper, a rendering, it's one of our originals, but I'll show that to you. This was in the paper a month or two ago, and it's the rendering we originally worked off of. You can see, we've modified it somewhat. But this is an idea of how we perceive the development possibly being finished out with the moves and modifications that we've made in that first phase. And we left this as a greenbelt area, just to determine what supply, what sort of user might come in this area, subject to the supply and demand. We would hope that the whole thing would be in retail. But you know, that's, that just depends on how many people are able to come back to town, how much the population grows, how much the town grows to the west, and the number of retailers that we can get in. I've already talked to a number of them, and we have two or three that are ready to come with us at this point. We think the logistics of being by the college, the Haney Center, and the dorms and all of this, the baseball facility, high school across the street from the highway, Highway Nine, that this is an excellent location for the town to grow, and new housing develops to be a part of. We've worked with all local builders, we have our own builder groups. We're excited to be here. We're especially, as many developments as we've done over the years, I, I've gotta say honestly, no reason or motive behind it, but this is the most interesting, most intriguing in Seminole-type development that I think I've ever come across. You have, you have done a magnificent, wonderful job over the years. No other town your size has the ability to retain and continue to build in the business sector like you do. So, mayor and councils, city manager and staff, you're to be commended for the diversification, the number of people you have here working jobs. It's phenomenal. And you know, I live in Oklahoma City Edmond area, we developed in the Oklahoma City area. I've never seen this take place in a town such as Seminole. I've fallen in love with this place, we're excited to get started. Took us a long time to get here. We own the land, we're ready to go, we're almost completed with Phase One of engineering. We're excited, and we're happy to be here, and I know I'll be back in front of you again one of these days very soon. I would entertain any questions at this time that you might have.
Do you need to be in the city of Seminole to, to do this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We will not be able to do it if we're not in city limits.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gases, would you?
We appreciate you very much, thank you for your time.
Good evening, I apologize, I didn't know I was giving a presentation, or I ought to have brought a PowerPoint as well. But, I think everyone in the City Council knows where we are in the high school, in the development phase. We have gone through a lot of trials and tribulations in Seminole over the past three to five years, in trying to get a new high school. And when we finally get to the point where we can pass a bond issue, we did. Very, it was a very exciting time for the school system. This community stepped up and, and really came forward and helped us get that done. We selected a piece of property based on some evaluations that we did on the amount of space that we needed. And unfortunately, the piece of property that we chose was not within the city limits. So, in working very closely with the city manager and the city attorney, we had come up with a plan to incorporate that along with some neighboring properties as well. I firmly believe it is the future of our community, for that future high school. We are to the phase right now where the Board of Education approved the architectural drawings last night. If the City Council approves the annexation today, we go out to bid tomorrow. So, we're moving forward, and we're excited, and we're very happy about that. We've worked very closely with the city in anticipation of the annexation, and talking about utilities placements, getting things out there. And, and talking about, Steve, to answer the question that you just asked, can we do this outside the city limits? Theoretically, we can, but now it, it would very slow us down, because we'd have to redraw things to not be able to take advantage of city utilities.
Right.
So, it's very, I think it's important for us to move forward with this project, and we respectfully asked the city to approve the annexation of our property. We also have a neighboring piece of property, Ms. Hernandez, who has asked that we speak on her behalf as well, because she has 40 acres just adjacent to us, to the west. And she would like that incorporated as well. And we are looking at options available for that piece of property as well. Any questions that I can answer from the City Council? I think everyone around town has seen our renderings. We've got them posted in the banks, we've got them posted in some stores, at the gyms, at every school site. It's a beautiful building, and we're excited to be getting in there in the fall of 2020.
I see, I see Rick, oh, here he is. Rick, would you like to say anything at all about your parcel?
Would I answer a question?
Okay, okay. So, I think for the most part, we've got all of our owners that have been given a chance to speak. Sharon, can you, one of the things we found in our research is that we need to be able to provide a plan of services to that area that is going to be annexed. So, we have put together a short, very short, but I think it's fairly comprehensive plan to be able to provide the services. You see the, obviously, the fire service, the ambulance service, sewer and water. And also, the police will be able to enforce our city codes and ordinances and the state law, obviously, in that area. So, we'll be able comfortably to be able to do all that, I think, pretty quick. You will probably be hearing from Bryant Baker wanting a little bit better fire coverage with either equipment or a station. I'm gonna have to hold him at bay until we can afford it. But, right now, I think we can comfortably do all the city services out there with the plans that we've put in place with Mr. Gases and with RCL Development. I think we are going to be able to cover it comfortably. The, the water, we've got plenty of water in terms of the gallons per minute and the flow. I forget, I think it's, I don't remember how many gallons a minute. It was 1,500 gallons a minute at the Haney Center. Big, big water supply, I think it was 52 or 57 pressure, and that's, that's significant. We're gonna be able to provide the bulk waste, the trash, all the mosquito spraying, they'll, they'll become a part of our city, so we'll be, comfortably be able to do that. Any questions about being able to provide the city services to the proposed annexed territory? Okay.
Are there any comments or questions from any of the members in the audience regarding the annexation?
I'm Linda Littles, I live on Malloy Road, I'm very close to it, I've come to its top. I wanna make sure that the city, my water line comes up Malloy Road, and I just put the second line in, two years ago. So, at $6,000 again, I wanna make sure that they, the city, is going to fix my water line up to my house, and fix the water, where I can have water to my house. That's where I want to know, and I wanna know, kind of, when this is gonna be started with the road, so that I can kind of know, because this is my road, and we all live up there. So, that's kind of what I wanna know.
So, your question is with regard to timing on Malloy Road?
Y'all are gonna bring your water up to my house, right? I mean, y'all are taking my water line out.
We will not leave you without water, period. Yeah, that's, that's not gonna happen. In, in terms of the road, Malloy Road, will depend largely upon the, the schedule that Seminole State College has for the development of the baseball fields. We don't, we don't even have the site plan yet, so it's hard for me to tell you, yeah, by August, we'll be starting work on that road, I just don't know that yet. But, there will be some road improvements. My understanding, what I learned, was that we've got a 60-foot road easement now on that Malloy Road. And, so that's, that should be plenty to do the improvements that need to be done. And the city will be participating with the college on doing those improvements to the road. I can't promise you, you will, your car will stay clean while we do that improvement, but I will tell you that it's gonna be better than, than what you've got now.
Is the road gonna come all the way down Malloy Road to the very end of the road?
I don't know that yet, we're gonna have to wait and see what the architects come up with, with the, the college plan. Right now, our pri- Right now, our primary focus is going to be getting the, the development ready to develop. And then as Seminole State comes online and they're ready to do their baseball fields, anytime you want to talk or have questions about timing, and I'll try to keep in the back of my mind to, to come and visit with you. You'll see me, as fast as my hair grows, you'll probably see me once a month. By the way, she's responsible for making me look like George Clooney. So Shelley, what are you laughing so hard about? So anyway, I'll, I'll make sure that you're, you're kept aware and anytime your neighbors, if they have questions.
Neither my neighbors.
Okay. You guys, anytime you've got questions, feel free to come visit with me at city hall and we'll answer everything that we possibly can. This is going to be as transparent as it comes. We're not going to hide anything. So if you've got questions about your water, you know, are we going to have pressure? We're going to, what's it look like? We'll be, we'll be glad to answer those things. As the engineers plan it, we'll be talking to you.
I'm Luke Kester. We have a business at 200 North Malloy Road, which is right on the curve of where this 10 acre track is.
Okay.
And where they're going to put the new road, we've got, we have heavy equipment that goes in and out of there, so we need to know if any of that's going to be stopped where we can't be driving heavy equipment trucks and lines, trucks and trailers, stuff like that. I mean, they got, you know, I know they have housing going in there and a bunch of integrated area, you know, so I mean, we're taking big stuff in and out from time to time, so is that something that is shut down or?
We'll have to talk about that. Right now, the plan has not been to build an industrial strength road through there. It was going to be more of a gathering.
Right. Again, I understand that. I, I don't know, I don't know if it's a conversation that we need to have not in the form, but I mean, what, what actions do we go through if they make it in operation?
Well, you'll never be cut off. We've got to be able to provide you access. I mean, you're, you're going to get access. The question is, do we give an alternate way to get around the road? In other words, if we put in three inches of asphalt and you guys are bringing dozers over it, that's a problem.
Right.
So we're going to have to give you maybe, maybe an alternate way to get in and out with heavy stuff. So we'll, we need to talk more about that and I, this is, I didn't know this.
Well, this is kind of interesting too. We didn't know, I mean, we knew that the housing project was going, but I didn't know that they were blacktopping the road and stuff like that. And like you said, you know, I mean, the, they're going to have to change if you're talking about, you know, what's going to hold up to.
Mm-hmm. Do you have a way north? Is there also access to the north?
So right here where the red line is.
That little piece that had off the, to the east of?
Yeah, where it starts going north right there on the east side of your line. That's, that corner is our driveway right there.
Do I want to?
Yes, yeah, right there. So the road comes up there and then it comes.
We're, we should be looking right here. This would be Malloy Road.
I don't actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it'd be, yeah. It's a, but he's right, it's the same.
He's all around the end of the corner of Malloy Road is where you come down.
But we both ride into their track, into their 10 acre track right there.
Okay, so you're, you're right here, this?
Way back over there.
No, he's talking way back.
Oh, all the way?
The east. Now, his land is, joins the land that they just bought, that little piece that sticks up there, on that other?
Oh, the finger, that's the, this would be.
Let's go on this one right here.
Yep, this would be the.
Little finger sticks up on this to the east of here.
Yep, this would be the finger that you're seeing on that map.
Right.
Okay, right here.
Yeah.
So your, your 10 acres is right here.
On the east of, if that's the east of.
Yeah. I'll show you. I believe it's this finger right here.
That's, that's right.
I believe this is Malloy Road right here.
Yes.
And our 10 acre would be this area right here. So it comes right into this track. The problem is, that's going to be entirely the road.
Okay, okay. So this, this, all right, I got some good news and bad news. You're already in the city limits. We didn't know that until we started researching this.
We haven't been able to know that.
We, Brad didn't find this until we got, I mean, we were deep into the jungle in this research and we found a, a plat done in 1936 that actually called Anderson Heights.
Right.
That puts your 10 acres in.
Right.
So we didn't know that. We've never treated it like city limit, so.
Well, that's kind of, we've had, you know, the, it's a bad road, so the road washes out and you call somebody to fix it.
Right.
So he says, well, it's county and county says, well, it's city, you know, so we've been back.
Yep, yep.
But I mean, I don't know, I don't know how much that changed with the funding that everybody has going on or mainly, can that shut us down where we can't, I mean, the worst case scenario is we get an alternate route.
Yeah, I, let me study on it some. Let me get with Brad and with Larry and see what kind of deal we can develop to help you guys out.
Steve, would they be in my ward?
Our immediate plan is to make this part of Ward Two since it's the only ward that touches any of the new annexed property. Ward Two is the only one that touches it.
So we are huge.
Bragging on.
Bragging on.
Are there any other appearances from the audience concerning the public hearing on
Did you, you good? Okay.
I was just going to say we'll create a couple of temporary construction agents to bring you the access.
Okay.
In that process too. That's what we're looking to do. I don't know.
Go ahead and get a motion to close the public hearing.
Shall move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience not for the public hearing regarding the annexation for the city council? Under approvals and acceptances, ordinance one, consideration possible action to approve ordinance number 1211, an ordinance annexing certain property into the corporate boundaries of the city of Seminole, Oklahoma pursuant to 11 O S. Section 21-103.
Mr. Mayor, certify that the election board has verified that no registered voters live on the properties that are being annexed into the territory and that the four property owners are the record owners of the property and all have petitioned the city council in conformance with the statute. That notice has been published and mailed as required by law, specifically Section 21-103 of Title 11, that based our, based on our knowledge and belief, all legal requirements for you to consider this, that the council to consider the motion or the petition rather is, have been met and that not three quarters, but 100% of those owners are in agreement.
Motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
Can I get a roll call please, Jay?
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration possible action to approve ordinance number 1212, an ordinance rezoning certain property located at 2707 Ideal Street from A1 Agriculture to C1 Neighborhood
This is right across the street from you, just south, almost to Shelley's shop across the street. Jerry Coclaser bought it and wants to turn it into a duplex, I believe. Is that right, Sharon? Is that one we're talking about?
Would that be neighborhood commercial or neighborhood like residential?
To be a duplex, it would have to be R2 or better.
Okay.
And since the property to the south was already C1, it wouldn't be spot zoning if we would have had it in, would have had it in C1.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Should I be abstaining from this if something was voted on in plan to commission?
I don't think so.
Okay. Just making sure it was okay to.
Yeah, you're good.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution number three, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-2, a resolution approving the citizen participation plan for 2018.
So the citizen participation plan is something that we do every year, basically, and it's something that aligns us with the federal law so that we can apply for the community development, the community development block grant. This is a requirement. If you don't have a citizen participation plan, which we outline almost annually, then we are not in line to apply for those federal grants.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-3, a resolution affirming the city of Seminole's commitment to the Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG grant funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-4, a resolution of the city council of the city of Seminole whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of setting forth the procedure for removal of elected officials by recall petition and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Mr. Mayor, the next several resolutions are the resolutions that have already been considered and I actually voted on for submittal to the vote of the people here based upon the charter committee's recommendations. As you know, we had to, there were some legal requirements that were not met, so we, by your direction, the council's direction, we have modified those and placed those back in front of you with the correct corrections. And the election board has looked at those, approved those, found them to be in proper form, and you're ready to vote on those again. And this would be for the June 26th election, and that would be at no cost, I understand, to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-5, a resolution of the city council of the city of Seminole whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of extending the terms of city council from two years to four years and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized by the election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number seven, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-6, a resolution of the city council of the city of Seminole whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of amending Article Five, Section Five dash Four of the city charter authorizing the city council to adopt codes by removing milk and milk products and adding health and safety and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-7, a resolution of the city council of the city of Seminole whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of amending the procedure of competitive bidding on public improvements and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine, consideration possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-8, a resolution of the city council of the city of Seminole whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of extending the terms of the mayor from two years to four years and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 10, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution number 2018-9, a resolution allowing for the possession, consumption of wine and low point beer in places during the Maiden Oklahoma Festival on April 7th, 2018.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Abstain please.
Motion passes.
You do know abstention is a no vote, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just throwing that out there.
I got you.
Current business, consideration possible action to approve allowing the Seminole Chamber of Commerce to host the annual Maiden Oklahoma Festival at Municipal Park and to close Grissow Drive from Fairway Drive to Keith Marshall and Keith Marshall from Fairway Drive to Lloyd Simmons on Friday, April 6th through Saturday evening, April 7th.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Adson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under reports, city manager.
Yes, sir. If, if it pleases the mayor and council, I would like to recognize our leadership Seminole class. I think that we've got several here. If you don't mind, would you please stand and let us see who you are? Any leadership Seminole folks with us today? Hey, thank you for coming. Very good, very good, all right. Hey, we really appreciate you guys taking the initiative to learn more about our community and hopefully you'll leave educated about how you can get involved and plug it in. Maiden Oklahoma Festival, we've already talked a little bit about that. I really encourage you to, to get out and enjoy one of the cool things about Seminole and what we have to offer here on a local level. Want to congratulate our, really both basketball teams, but our boys' basketball fought valiantly and we enjoyed watching them all year. I appreciate their efforts and, and Coach E and, and all that they've done. It's, it was fun to, fun to be a part of that. I see Jeff Griffin. Appreciate you coming back. I, I didn't figure you could stay away, so, welcome back. That seat's not quite as soft as this one up here, is it? No. I just, you know, the storm season's coming on us. Please have your plan together. We, we dodged a bullet last October and just be sure that you and your family have a plan. We've got a really good plan at the city emergency management level, but individually, you're, you are responsible for your own family and make sure you're ready for this. Just be responsible as you get into it. Lastly, I want to congratulate all of us for our new high school. I am so excited and thank you for annexing the territory that really kicks the door open. We are hoping that we have plans this week, if not tomorrow, that we can look at and approve quickly and we're ready to get it underway. Mr. Gases and Marcy, thank you so much for your leadership and that's all I have.
City attorney?
Nothing, just thank the property owners for being patient and working with us, being so responsive to all the requests and meeting us here and there in the middle of the Oklahoma City to get a document signed or whatever we needed. And just, just thanks a lot for your patience, basically.
Ward one, Bill Watland?
I have a few things to say. And this may be controversial, but I want to go on record as strongly disapproving the action and mind of the Oklahoma State House of Representatives in refusing to deal with the budget and with the necessity for providing money for education and for our teachers. Senate's done its job, the House has not, and I am deeply disappointed.
Clear here.
You said a couple.
That's just one thing. Well, let me say, that's a bipartisan thing because I think it doesn't make any difference whether you're a Democrat or Republican, you're not doing your job.
Larry Church?
Well, I want to thank everyone for the opportunities that have came our way here. Thank you, sir, for having some confidence and faith in our community. Most people probably know that I'm relatively new to Seminole. I moved here several years ago thinking I was going back to Fort Gibson. But, I found this is the most amazing community for its size of any place that I've ever been. Thank you for recognizing that. I've often tell people that Seminole is actually a big city in a small town. All, all the things that we have here, you just don't find it anywhere in a town of seventy-some hundred people. And I understand that we have capacity to supply water for what, thirty thousand people or something like that? It's just unbelievable that we have the opportunities that we have. So, I want to thank everyone for that. And then, I want to comment about, I, I guess it's an old adage, it's an old saying, that it's better to prevent crimes than it is to punish them. And the best way that I can suggest that we do that is to assure that women and girls live in happy, healthy homes. We have an opportunity in our community to assure that beyond what any other community of this size can do. And I just think that that's something we can take advantage of and I hope to see that developed. Thank you.
Ward two, Stephanie Lambert?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lambert and for those of you that are going to be annexed into Ward Two, that'll be my ward, but I don't, and all of you guys that are, so, that's who I am, I'll be your council rep and also John Kramer, who is usually sitting right here where I am. But, I want to introduce myself and if you ever need to get ahold of me, you can call the city offices, almost everybody there knows how to get ahold of me. And Sharon's smiling over there because I call her very often and ask questions, but if I don't know the answers or I don't know how to get the answers, I'll help you look and I'll help you find them. And one of the things that I will encourage you to do is to always look for the truth and don't believe the rumors. Always come find us and if I don't know the truth or if I don't know, if I don't have the information, I will direct you to the information and help you, and help you find out so that way you can decide for yourself on what, you know, what the truth is or where, where it is. But, my job primarily is to help you find your, find the information and to be here to represent you.